Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Nine to zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, May 23rd, 2011 Meeting of the Evanston City Council. First is Mayor Proclamations and Public Announcements. And I would like to announce that Evanston's own Yvonda Thomas is the winner of the Evanston Idol for a year. Congratulations, Yvonda. Would you like to sing?
I'll go say, "Sing your thank you."
Oh, we'll put it on the agenda for another meeting and then she'll have to sing.
Actually, Alderman Grover had said that she thought that all of the presentations, if I remember from Human Services, should be presented musically. Is that not right? Alderman Grover?
You're absolutely right. Alderman Holmes, I think, would present a new challenge to all of our people here before us.
I have asked that we all receive an email telling us when we can watch this.
And hear it.
And hear it. It will be broadcast again, hopefully again and again. Congratulations.
I understood it was to be rebroadcast tonight at 10:00. So we could entertain people in the Aldermanic Library if this meeting ends.
Or we could finish the meeting.
If this meeting ends early enough.
My next announcement is congratulations, City Clerk Mr. Green. He has won the International Institute of Municipal Clerks Award for Excellence in Governance. And perhaps you would like to just show us the award and tell us how you did that.
What happened is that each year, at these annual convention of the International Municipal Clerks, they ask for submissions of projects that someone in the city has done that made an impact on the community. What we submitted this year was the introduction of the red forms and the water affidavit online so that when we lost our agent downtown in Chicago Loop, we had no one who could sell the stamps to the people who had property here in Evanston. So that went online. It saved us, the city, money in postage and also saved the lawyers down in Loop postage. And so from that, the presentations of those who presented, Evanston wound up being the chosen winner for the year 2011. And I received this while I was in Tennessee. So that's where I was the first weekend in May. This is for all of us. I also want to thank Erica Storey because if it wasn't for her ingenuity in getting it on the website so that we could unload the people's information on the web, online, download it, then mail it to us, along with the water affidavit and also Elaine Ottwell, my deputy, who helped to proofread everything. So between the three of us, this is what we wound up getting for the city.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Was I supposed to sing that?
Yeah.
Congratulations. Next, City Manager, public announcements.
Yes, Suzette Robinson, our Public Works Director, is here to give a plug on the change to refuse schedules for the Memorial Day holiday.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Clerk Green. Suzette Robinson, the Director of Public Works. And in observance of Memorial Day, May 30th, all trash collection will occur one day later that week. And the recycling collection for condominiums that occurs on Friday will move to Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, Madam Mayor, just a reminder that the Mr. Public Library will be closed on Sunday and Monday of this weekend for the holiday. And then finally, tomorrow evening at 7:00 in the parasol room, we will have a informational meeting regarding a proposed tax on bags here in Evanston. We'll be talking about the issue in broad terms, taxes, bans on plastic bags, bans on paper bags, all of the above. We encourage folks to come. The format of the meeting, we'll have a presentation by Catherine Hurley, our Standing of Programs Coordinator, who will give an overview of the issue. There's also a white paper online that residents can consult. We will then have roundtable discussions from folks that are present to talk about the issue, have those tables or report out their discussions. And also if there are representatives from organizations present, we will also give the representatives of those organizations an opportunity to make a statement. We'll bring all that information back to the City Council at a future meeting to continue the discussion regarding bags in Evanston.
Thank you. Next, City Clerk, Bureau of Communications.
Nothing at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next is Citizen Comment. Each citizen will have three minutes. And please do not go over that time limit. The first four are Michael Miro, Betty Esther, Nancy DePont, 615 Dempster, and Frank Jeffers.
Good evening. I'm Michael Miro. I am the Programs Director and Farmers Market Manager of Ridgeville Park District.
I forgot. I apologize. You need to say where you live.
Oh, I'm sorry. 1410 Chicago Avenue.
Thank you.
I've come here tonight to ask you to consider waiving or significantly reducing the $225 health inspection fee that affects the vendors at our market. As you know, we're a smaller market. We're a midweek market. We generally try and have between eight to 10 vendors a summer. And this fee would affect eight of our vendors. It's quite possible that without this fee being adjusted, we will lose some, if not all, of our vendors. Frankly, because it's not worth their time and energy. They're just not generating enough revenue to justify coming. We have a couple of our vendors here in the audience. If you could just raise your hand. And I recognize, you know, that this fee may be appropriate for some of the vendors at the downtown market. But our market just simply doesn't generate enough traffic to justify the cost for the vendors. We think that the farmers' market is a tremendous asset to South Evanston. We really try and make it a community event, a place where neighbors can come together and visit, where nonprofits can set up their booths and give out information, where local musicians can play. And it's really hard to create that sort of atmosphere if there's only two vendors at the market. So we're asking for a little help in this regard. And I think there'll be some of our vendors who will be speaking tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Betty Esther. I stay at 2031 Church Street. From a phone call from Madeline Dupree, who stays at 1929 Foster Street, asked that for a P2 ordinance, 460-01, about the special use for the building and stuff at 1915 and 1919 Gray, that you do not suspend the rule and let it be introduced tonight so she could have a chance at the next council meeting to speak on her own behalf with her own voice. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Frank Jeffers. I live at 613 Sheridan Road. I serve as the Vice Chairman of the Friends of the Evanston Farmers Market. And I'm here just to observe the process of passing and be available to answer any questions if you have that at that time. I want to thank Doug Gaynor and Zolly Webb for their support of the markets and what they've done and their willingness to work with us as friends and try to make them better, not only the downtown market, but the remaining four markets throughout Evanston. And other hat, speaking as an individual, I just, I want to hope that the full council recommends to the Health Department that they engage in a conversation with citizens and businesses who are impacted by the fees that are charged by the Health Department to inspect the foods. I did some analysis of the memorandum of Director Thomas. And it's very difficult to understand the support for charging $225 for an inspection of a farmer. The hours suggested that they spend in doing the inspection, I have not observed that those to be true or accurate, nor that the time that they spend is always in time and a half, i.e. the Ridgeville Market occurs on Wednesdays, which is workdays. And so that should be at straight time. So there's a lot of questions are raised as a support for the fees charged. And I understand that we're all under pressure to collect money, but to have an open dialogue to understand why the certain fee, why the support for certain fees. Because we do find farmers and vendors not coming to markets because of the cost of health inspections. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Virginia Mann, Padmoreo, Eve Doi, and Junead Riske.
Virginia Mann, 3004 Normandy Place. Regarding Item A 3.7, I'd like to thank you for your ongoing support of the elm tree injection program. Your decision to inject all of our elm trees will help save tax dollars, reduce air pollution, protect our property values, and maintain the character of our community. Your support for this program is greatly appreciated. Over the past several years, I've addressed this council on numerous occasions about our trees. Although council members have not always agreed with my position, I've always been given the opportunity to share my perspective in what I hope has been a thoughtful and professional manner. In return, like everyone else who speaks here, I've been treated with consideration and respect, which I appreciate. Earlier this month, I joined my neighbors in making a presentation before the Evanston Plan Commission regarding the redevelopment of the Presbyterian home property. The manner in which I was treated at the Plan Commission was completely contrary to how I have been treated before this body. I encourage each of you to watch the meeting as I don't believe any of you would be proud of how my neighbors and I were treated. My hope is that steps can be taken to ensure that Evanston taxpayers receive fair, equitable, and respectful treatment, not only when they address this council, but when they speak to any committee of the city. After all, this is our city. And it would seem that we should receive the same consideration and respect that was afforded the paid consultants who were speaking on behalf of the Presbyterian homes. Thank you very much. And I would like to share with you a copy of their presentation that we gave.
My name is Padmoreau. I live at 2246 Sherman Avenue. And I'm speaking regarding the re-subdivision of the Kendall Block this evening. My neighbors and I have stated concerns regarding this matter, specifically the plan to needlessly kill over two dozen mature trees and to pointlessly endanger the lives of young children and other pedestrians on Colfax Street. Our concerns are supported by authorities in law, science, ecology, zoning, tax considerations, and logic. This council has adamantly refused to answer any of our questions or to state any reason or basis for ignoring our concerns. One council member stated that the developer's plan is, quote, "by right," end quote, but to this day refuses to point to any legal authority that confers any such alleged right. Instead, according to an article in the Evanston Patch, the same council member was overheard reassuring the developer's lawyer that the decision would be pushed through no matter what. The same council member used the April 12th call of the wards to engage in self-praise instead of providing a single citation to law, or basis in fact, for the decision. The city's lawyer never cited any legal basis for this council's decision. Instead, by treating the developer's lawyer like co-council and being inaccessible to the point of hostility towards the public, the city's lawyer created the appearance that the city and developer are co-parties in an adversarial action against the citizens. The City Code, Section 413.1 Part B states in pertinent part, "No such re-subdivision shall be approved by the City Council unless it conforms with all the applicable ordinances of the city." One such applicable ordinance is the zoning ordinance, Section 617.6 of which states, "Existing trees shall be preserved in place wherever possible." At Section 612, the zoning ordinance includes, among its purposes, promoting the public health and safety, securing pure air and safety from dangers, minimizing or lessening congestion in the public streets, and encouraging the preservation and enhancement of natural resources, historic resources, natural features, and aesthetic amenities. Therefore, I submit that tree protection and traffic safety are requirements of the zoning ordinance, compliance with which is mandated by the City Code. The Illinois Municipal Code, part of state law, states in pertinent part at 65 ILCS 5/1115.1, "If any municipality has adopted a subdivision ordinance, all subdivision plats shall be submitted for approval and approved in the manner provided in such ordinance." So state law requires this council to abide by the provisions of the City Code governing subdivisions, which in turn requires the council to deny any re-subdivision that fails to comply with the provisions of the zoning ordinance regarding tree protection and traffic safety. State law goes further, adding in pertinent part at 65 ILCS 5/1112.8, "The person requesting the re-subdivision shall file four copies of a plat thereof with the clerk of the municipality and shall furnish therewith four copies of all data necessary to show compliance with all applicable municipal regulations." So the developer was required to produce all data necessary to show compliance with the zoning ordinance, including its provisions regarding tree protection and traffic safety. However, there were no data provided regarding traffic safety or to support killing over two dozen trees. No scientific or ecological data were ever cited to show compliance with city ordinances or to support...
Ms. Ray, your three minutes is up. It does say that in our rules that I know, but it does say in our rules, it is written in our rules, I would be happy to read it, that no individuals shall speak longer than three minutes. And I realize that in the past, we have allowed you six minutes. But as I said at the beginning, I would like to stick to our rules, which are that each speaker shall not speak for more than three minutes.
Then may my mother speak?
Yes, she may.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I can read. I'm reading. However, there were no data provided regarding traffic safety or to support killing of over two dozen trees. No scientific or ecological data were ever cited to show compliance with city ordinances or to support this council's decision. Where are the data? Illinois case law supports the position that I have stated. In Brown versus City of Joliet, the court held that municipalities were authorized to pass ordinances imposing regulations upon applications for subdivision and that such an application is properly denied if the applicant fails to show compliance with the regulations. The court further held that denial of a subdivision application is appropriate where the public health and welfare are at issue, stating, "The only benefit to plaintiff is an economic gain from the sale of her lots and possibly the avoidance of an economic loss thereon, whereas the public loss might well result in sewer water backing up in people's homes in the area. The public gain, therefore, in enforcing the ordinance could reasonably have been determined to outweigh plaintiff's loss." Brown versus City of Joliet, 101... Okay. Here, this council's decision results in the loss of over two dozen trees that have been part of our community and history. No data have been provided regarding the long-term ecological impact of such an act. This council's decision to allow a dangerous traffic configuration may well result in the loss of life and limb for some of my neighbors. What legitimate reasons could possibly support a decision with such dire and irreversible consequences? I respectfully demand that each and every council member clearly state the specific legal authorities that they relied upon in voting for this decision. I further respectfully demand that each and every council member produce the data that they relied upon to determine compliance with the traffic safety and the tree protection provisions of the zoning ordinance. This council's continued refusal to disclose any information in this regard raises the presumption that the information either does not exist or that it does not support this council's decision. The implication of this presumption is that each and every council member's vote for this plan is a breach of their fiduciary obligation to the city and the citizens. So throw up or fess up. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. You did very well.
Good evening. My name is Eve Doi. I'm with the Evanston Chamber at 1840 Oak Avenue on Suite LM 110. I'm pretty new, and that's why I'm here. Just wanted to introduce myself as the new Executive Director of the Evanston Chamber of Commerce and wanting to really extend kind of an olive branch and tell you all that I'm looking forward to working with you. In the past, I'm not sure that the Chamber and the city have worked as well together as maybe they could have. And I just want to be a resource to you. I'm offering our staff and our board to you as resources and also partners in the process to make Evanston the best community it can be. And so if there's something I can do to help you, please don't hesitate to give me a call or stop by our office. And I'll look forward to talking to you later. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And welcome to Evanston.
I just have a few things to comment on, Junead Riske. The salt dome that the city talked about at the last meeting, I found it interesting tonight, we're going to purchase 7,000 tons, basically, of salt for about $56 a ton. It appears to me the issue here isn't building a big building, but really the purchasing practices of the city of Evanston to purchase the salt. And that's really an issue here. And I think the council needs to have staff go through all these purchasing practices and figure out what's going on here. And why do buildings sometimes, if you don't have a program in place that makes any sense, why are you building a building? And the one thing I found disturbing again is we're doing work for Skokie again. Basically, we're doing work for another community in that building. And here again, we don't, you know, is this beneficial to us as taxpayers? Just like the whole thing with the roadkill issue. You know, we're doing work for other communities. Are we really subsidizing other communities? And the other thing I heard tonight on Gray Avenue, and I don't live anywhere near Gray Avenue, but, you know, staff here again appears dropped the ball with notifying these neighbors. But what really disturbed me, looking at, and obviously some of you know I'm an architect, looking at what I saw up there, I couldn't make heads or tails of how the properties around that property were being impacted. And frankly, if the city was involved in this with city symbols on these drawings and things, the city has a responsibility to protect these neighbors. You know, frankly, if this was in a historic neighborhood, I think this would be basically a different area of town. People would be up in arms a little bit more about the impacts on people's property surrounding this. And my last item, given the budgetary issues here, the city continues to send out some pretty interesting mixed messages. We're going to borrow $4 million from a SOAR fund. But we're going to, we need to operate with, we need to basically take money out of the operating fund to fund capital. Now, just to get a point of reference, how many employees does that mean you lay off to take $2 million this year and then another $2 million next year to do this? Because the money's not there, so I don't really understand it. Borrowing makes sense. If we have some big problem here, then we need to discuss this problem, why we can't borrow. And I just don't understand that. The other thing is there seems to be a continued hiring of new employees here. And I mean, we got a message that we might not even be able to fund, cut firefighters, for instance. Well, why aren't we just hiring contract firefighters, but other city employees too? Why did we hire all these, why do we hire all these people for 3-1-1 as full-time employees and not fill this with contractors mostly? If we're going to be laying all these people off? To me, these are really mixed messages. You're sending the taxpayers, but you're also sending these mixed messages to employees here. And I think someone suggested that the other night that employees are angry because they're not appreciated. Well, I think employees are getting some pretty mixed messages here that may make them angry. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment, I believe. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First item on the consent agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of May 9. Administration and Public Works Committee requests your approval of the payroll through May 8, $2,488,528.91, and the bills for FY 2011 through May 24 in the amount of $2,979,024.98. The committee also recommends a contract award to Central Parking System to manage and operate the Sherman Plaza, Maple Avenue, and Church Street parking facilities. The term is for an initial two-year and eight-month period beginning May 1, 2011, terminating December 31, 2013, with two optional one-year renewals, for a not-to-exceed cost of $1,007,099 for the first eight months of the contract, $1,511,299 for year two, and $1,545,977 for year three. Funding is provided by the Parking Fund. We ask your approval of a two-year contract for meter transmission units for two water resources in the amount of $58,000, just so there's no these units transmit water usage, your water usage to the Water Department. Next, we ask your approval of a one-month extension to the city's current electrical supply agreement with Mid-America Energy Company. This is so that we can effect a second agreement, which is on your table tonight. It is a new long-term agreement for energy usage. And this agreement is with Exelon Energy Company to provide electrical energy to 23 city-owned facilities beginning July 1, 2011. Staff recommends that this agreement be based on the 25% renewable energy for the 36-month period, you'll see the tables on the information, for a price of .04931 cents per kilowatt hour. Going to leave this on the consent agenda unless anybody has an objection. So it's two parts. One is the one-month extension with our current provider. And the second is the long-term extension with, or the long-term contract with Exelon Energy. Next is approval of an award of design services for the Service Center Locker Room Renovation Project to Beals &amp; Beals, an Evanston business, at a total cost of $40,200. This is through the Capital Improvement Program with a total allocation of $37,500. Approval is also requested for a sole-source purchase of Andover brand building automation system controls from Schneider Electric for the BAS upgrade project at the Evanston Civic Center in the amount of $97,000. We also ask your approval of the abatement and disposal of asbestos-containing material at the Civic Center to NES in the amount of $44,000. Also requested is your approval of a contract in the amount of... Also requested is your approval of a contract in the amount of nine hundred and, six hundred ninety-seven thousand three hundred and five dollars to Nell's Johnson Tree Expert for the two thousand and eleven Dutch Elm Disease Control Program. Funding for this is from the General Fund in the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred dollars, and reserve funds from previous years in the amount of five hundred thirteen thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars. We ask your approval for the malt, Morton Salt Purchase. The contract is for seven thousand tons of rock salt for a, the winter season total of four hundred and nineteen thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. Funding is from the Snow and Ice Control Fund and will be split between two thousand eleven, the rate of two hundred thousand, and two thousand and twelve at two hundred nineteen thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. The committee recommends your approval of the city, and for the city manager to sign a one-year lease agreement with Chicago Harley-Davidson in the amount of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars for the period of June one to, June one, two thousand eleven, to June one, two thousand and twelve, for seven leased Harley-Davidson motorcycles. We also ask your approval for a contract for the parking deck renovation design engineering services to Carl Walker, to Carl Walker, Inc., to facilitate the emergency repair of the Evanston Municipal Service Center Building D parking deck. Funding for the work is from the CIP Fund Service Center Parking Deck Repairs in the amount of forty-four thousand three hundred dollars. The total amount for the work, which is yet to be bid out, is a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. The committee recommends your approval of the single-source purchase of library automation services from the Cooperative Computer Services of Arlington Heights in the amount of eighty-two thousand six hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-four cents. Believe it or not, this is a one-point-seven decrease over last year on an annualized basis. The city council approved an intergovernmental agreement with Cooperative Computer Services for the provision of library automation services in two thousand and five. Administration and Public Works also recommends your approval of Resolution thirty-two R-ten, which authorizes the manager to enter into a five-year lease, allowing continued use of City Parking Lot Thirty-eight located at ten sixteen Grove Street. The lease will be with the YMCA located at one thousand Grove Street. We also request your approval of Resolution twenty-eight R-eleven, authorizing a new one-year lease term for the first-floor office space for the League of Women Voters of Evanston from June one to May thirty-first, two thousand and twelve, with a rent increase of three percent from two thousand, two hundred and eight dollars a month to two hundred and fourteen dollars a month. This is for action. The next item, I'm wondering, should be off the consent or should we leave it on? I don't know if you want to exclaim about it. I'll read it. Next item is Resolution thirty-three R-eleven. This authorizes approval, this requests your approval of resolution, this resolution, which authorizes the manager to sign the resolution of authorization for the open-space lands acquisition and development grant application through the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for the Centennial Park Lagoon renovation project. This is, program operates on a reimbursement basis, providing up to fifty percent assistance for approved project costs. This is the important part. A private donor has offered a half-a-million-dollar donation in support of this project. The OSLAD grant application will request a maximum grant award of four hundred thousand, a commitment of one hundred thousand in Capital Improvement Program funding through the pending fiscal year two thousand and twelve budget will also be required. This is for action. A seven is for introduction, and this authorizes the, this is requesting approval of the introduction of Ordinance twenty-eight oh eleven, which authorizes city to borrow funds from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency Water Pollution Control Loan Program. Loan funds will be used for the construction of the large diameter sewer rehab Phase One project. This ordinance authorizes the city to borrow up to four million dollars. The debt service will be paid from the sewer fund. For introduction is Ordinance forty-seven oh eleven. We ask your consideration of the adoption of forty-seven zero oh eleven, which provisionally amending the following titles to the Evanston City Code. Number one, Title One, General Administration. Number two, Title Two, Boards and Commission. And three, Title eleven, Administrative Adjudication. As I said, it's for introduction. For action tonight, we recommend your approval of Ordinance thirty-two oh eleven, which includes the reduced sale price of seven hundred and seventy thousand eighty-five dollars for the city property in the seven hundred block of Chicago Avenue due to current market conditions and the substantial change in property valuation. Construction is expected in two thousand and eleven, subject to final private funding approval. This ordinance was introduced at the May nine council meeting. Under Planning and Development for introduction, the Zoning Board of Appeals recommends the adoption of Ordinance thirty-nine oh eleven, which grants a special use permit for the operation of a resale establishment with certain conditions at sixteen-ten Maple. I'm introducing this, and the chairman of the committee will discuss the amendments made and move to suspend the rules this evening. Ordinance forty-six oh one, forty-six oh zero one, grants a special use permit for the planned development proposed at nineteen fifteen through nineteen nineteen Gray Avenue. The Plan Commission and the city staff recommend the adoption of forty-six oh zero one, granting a special use permit for the planned development at nineteen fifteen, nineteen nineteen. This is a revitalization program, six units of affordable housing, four units of new construction, and two rehabilitated units in part, as part of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Number Two. The applicant requests, and this is why it's a special use, the applicant requests to exceed development allowances to build a four-unit multifamily structure on the property and to allow the new residential building to stand nine feet, four and a half inches from the existing residential structure. This is for introduction tonight. Also for introduction tonight, and at the next meeting we'll discuss the amendments to it, or, and corrections. This is Ordinance fifty-three oh eleven. Staff recommends the passage of Ordinance fifty-three oh eleven, which amends various portions of the green building ordinance. Title five, Chapter twenty-four of the City Code of the City of Evanston, nineteen seventy-nine. The amendment provides for an appendix to address Evanston's sustainable building measures for new construction, which is part of an option for compliance with the city's goal of green building design for buildings ten thousand square feet to twenty thousand square feet. Under Human Services, Ordinance thirty-four oh eleven. Staff recommends approval as, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am. Ordinance thirty-four oh eleven, the Farmers Market Ordinance Amendment is off the consent agenda. Under Other Committees, the Rules Committee, there's a two-part resolution here. The first part is, I'm not sure how to read this. The first part is City Council Rule sixteen fifteen currently states, "The city council meetings shall be held semi-monthly or twice a month." On May two, the Rules Committee met and considered amendment to the Evanston City Code and the council rule noted above. The Rules Committee recommends that the city council meetings be held three times a month. Because of that resolution, we then must amend the city code. And the Rules Committee then recommends for introduction the adoption of Agenda Item, which is number two, Ordinance thirty-six oh eleven. The code currently states the council meeting shall be held semi-monthly or twice a month, respectively. As I mentioned, the Rules Committee met and has determined that the council meeting shall be held three times a month, and therefore, the code needs to be corrected. Then finally, and believe me not least, is the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten. This reflects all of the work done by the Community Development Block Grant Committee and staff. The Housing and Community Development Act Committee and staff recommend approval of the city's Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, commonly known as the CAPR. Regarding the city's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Home Investment Partnership, Home, and Emergency Shelter Grant, ESG, programs for two thousand and ten, eleven. The CAPR must be submitted to the Chicago Field Office with U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development by May third, two thousand and ten. This reflects all of the money expended and awarded over the last year, and I would really encourage you all to read it. And I know I'm sort of taking off here on the side, but Sarah Flax and the staff and the Community Development Block Grant Committee did amazing work on this. Then, for appointments, the Firefighters Pension Board, the mayor's recommending the approval of Joe Romano for the Minority Women and Evanston Business Enterprise Development Committee, Shashana Baranda, and the West Oakton Development Committee, Alan Spears, recommended for appointment. With that, Madam Mayor, I conclude the consent agenda and move its approval.
Second. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tandem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The consent agenda passes. Alderman Holmes, Administration and Public Works.
No report, Madam Mayor.
All right. Planning and Development, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. With regard to P-one, Ordinance thirty-nine oh eleven, granting special use for resale establishment at sixteen-ten Maple Street, this was amended to permit the business owner to allow people dropping off goods at the front of the store for things that are clothing, soft goods, things of that nature. The original materials had indicated that all deliveries otherwise would have had to be in the, through the back entrance at the alley. So, that was the amendment that was incorporated by the committee. And I would also move to suspend the rules to allow us to take action tonight so that the business owner can get her business up and running, hopefully, this weekend.
All right. So, would you like to first suspend the rules?
I'd like to suspend the rules. Thank you.
Seeing no lights for further discussion, City Clerk, would you call the roll? To suspend the rules, guys.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tandem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The rules are suspended.
And I would therefore like to move to adopt the ordinance as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance as amended. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tandem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The motion passes. Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tandem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move approval of Ordinance thirty-four oh eleven, Farmers Market Ordinance Amendments. Staff recommends approval of Ordinance thirty-four oh eleven, amending Chapter twenty-five Farmers Market of the Title III Business Regulations of the Evanston City Code related to the regulation of farmers' markets. The Human Services Committee reviewed and approved the changes to the ordinance on Monday, May second, two thousand and eleven. This ordinance was introduced at the May ninth, two thousand and eleven city council, at which time information was requested from the Health Department regarding food sanitation guidelines.
Second.
Do we have the report from the, was that given at the last? I don't know what we do.
Madam Mayor, Alderman Tandem members of the council, we have additional communications that's attached to the item. We would ask that the council consider the ordinance, and then we would be happy to move on to the discussion regarding the fees, if that would please the council.
Alderman Burris.
This is mostly regarding the fees, but I, hopefully, you received emails from Ridgeville Commissioners. I think you received at least communication from two of the Ridgeville Commissioners, from the Ridgeville staff, from Ridgeville vendors as well about their concern. This is going to kill the Ridgeville Farmers Market if you go down this path. It may not matter to the most of Evanston, but it does matter to South Evanston. As you heard tonight from staff, it's not just about a Farmers Market. We want our produce, fresh produce, but it's about community. It's a place for people to gather, it's a place for people to, to get to know each other. By doing this, I think that it's a serious problem. I also have a serious problem with the, the fee structure that was outlined. I find it completely suspect, honestly, outrageous. I think the public should be crying foul. And I would love to hear from the vendors that they really believe that this breakdown, that the inspectors are honestly spending this much time with each of the vendors. I want to see effort reporting from each of the health inspectors if we really are saying that the health inspector is spending one hour looking at the application, another hour interviewing the vendor on the application. Then we have six, my computer's gone down. We have six hours that they're spending throughout the, the season, one-hour inspection six times throughout the season, and then we're paying them time and a half and sometimes double time. We wonder why we're in a budget crisis. This is why we're in a budget crisis, because we can't manage properly. This is ridiculous, this is happening, and we're trying to put vendors out of business. I got a call from another vendor that's trying to get into our downtown market. We're making it as difficult as possible to let her into our downtown market. We have to do something to help these folks.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Well, I think we're talking about two different things, though. The ordinance doesn't set the fees. The ordinance is just the ordinance, and I think that's the only thing that's before us right now. So, I don't see any reason not to proceed with the ordinance, and then, of course, the city staff is responsible for setting the fees and presumably, hopefully, with our input and direction. But this isn't setting the fees. This is simply establishing the ordinance, and the fees are independent of what we're being asked to do tonight.
Alderman Tandem.
I completely agree with both Alderman Wilson and Alderman Burris. The, we should go ahead with a vote on this ordinance and then turn it over to, much for the discussion about fees, particularly with regard to Ridgeville, and I think Alderman Burris is exactly correct that there's just something terribly gone wrong in this fee structure.
Alderman Holmes.
I certainly agree that we should go ahead with the ordinance, but I, I think that we need a better, well, not a better, I think we need a complete explanation of what vendors are actually inspected by the Health Department, all vendors, because when you say vendors, it sounds like we're talking about all the vendors, and we're not. From my experience, I think that we need to understand which vendors this affects and the health implications of that. I think that would be helpful, maybe, to the, some of the council members who are not at the Human Services Committee and may not have heard a more in-depth explanation of why there are fees for, I'm not talking about the amount of the fees, but why there are fees for health inspections, and the type of vendors that need health inspections, because there's a real difference in terms of regular vendors. I mean, you can have lots of vendors that would never need a health inspection. And I think we need to under, everyone needs to understand that.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
Pass in favor of a vote on the ordinance in front of us.
Seeing no further lights, it's been moved and seconded that we pass the Farmers Market Ordinance Amendments. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tandem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye, only if we discuss the fees later.
So, with a, with a concession.
It's an aye if. It's an "aye if."
One, eight.
Good, that's a.
Seven.
Eight-ish to one.
Eight-ish to one.
I'm serious, so I'm serious.
We know you are. The motion, the ordinance passes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, City Manager?
If it would please the council, then at this point, we would like to talk about the fees. There's additional information in your packet. Ivana Thomas, the Health Director's here, if she could come to the podium and give an overview of the fees. I also think it's important, as at least one Alderman indicated, to make a distinction of who has charged health inspections' fees and who's not charged health inspection fees. Carl Knieva, our Environmental Health Manager, is also here, so I think they'll, looks like they'll tag team this.
Good evening, City Manager, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Clerk. I'm Ivana Thomas, Health Director, and we did provide additional information in your packet as it relates to health inspection fees when they're seasonal, fees, temporary food event. At this time, Carl and I can entertain your specific questions if we haven't addressed them already.
Ms. Thomas, Mr. Knieva, I think it's important, and perhaps we can, we can ask the council to look specifically at the page that you have, and I don't have it immediately in front of me. Do you have the page in the packet?
Four twelve.
Four twelve, four eleven, four twelve. Ivana, if you could talk about the breakdown of the fee that you have here, I think specifically on page 413, the Farmers Market fees, if you could walk through what constitutes the costs associated with the Farmer Market fee, and if you could maybe talk a little bit about the vendors that are required to have it versus vendors that participate in Farmers Market who are not required.
Sure. Because I don't have the page number, I think it's the same memo where the Activity Application Review/Interview of Applicant, is that it?
That's correct.
Okay. That's specific, and I'm going to ask Carl to speak to that, about what actually takes place during that review. And again, we, the number that you're looking at, six inspections, isn't on average. It's not every vendor receives six inspections. Some of them are required that we come out and repeat an inspection, and that's through the six-month process. That's not, again, that's, it can vary from whether the vendor is providing cut or uncut foods or fruits and vegetables, et cetera. So I'm going to ask Carl to come and speak specifically to each item, what actually, walk you through a review process that would take that hour per inspector.
So to address, I think, first of all, the issue of who's getting these licenses and who's not, really, we're looking at the difference between fresh, whole, uncut produce and fruits. So if they, if they abide, the Farmers Markets vendors abide by that and don't do anything different from that, they're exempt from any fees or any inspections or anything like that. If they do anything different, and, for example, if they're doing any kind of cutting of foods, if they're doing any kind of baked goods or things like that, they fall under this, they fall under the ordinance, which is directed by the Illinois Department of Public Health, and gives us guidelines as to how to approach that. In regards to our review of the individual, of the individual vendors, we typically get an application from them that lists their food, lists their source. Our inspector, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Carl. Alderman Wynn, did you want to ask a question now?
Just quickly.
I'm sorry, Carl.
Yes, hold on.
But, so when I go through the Farmers Market and some of the fruit and vegetable vendors will slice up like a peach or an apple for you and let you taste it, is that someone who would then be inspected or not?
Typically, that's not inspected. That's something that is fresh at the time, and so they may be doing sampling. That's something that's beyond what we're doing on site. And so the typical person who applies to us has a product that they've processed over time and have done either they're, you know, they're doing a full process of.
So, but they're cutting and slicing, and that's what's, one of the things that you said is, is one of those prerequisites. So, so you're saying someone who just is offering you a slice of apple is not, is not someone who's inspected?
If they're offering, I mean, if they're slicing something, that, I mean, that applies to doing something different than offering whole uncut.
Right. No, they're slicing apples and peaches.
Okay, I'm sorry. If we know about it, and if we know about it beforehand while we're out there, yes, they would be, they would come under this ordinance.
Okay.
And specifically, Mr. Knieva?
Yes.
The slicing would be if they would plan, let's say, sell a bowl of sliced fruit, that was what would be, we under. And I, and I think it has been the city's practice that if the vendor only is selling fresh fruit or vegetables and they do not require the health permit, that this example that Alderman Wynn is giving is more of a gray area. It is really.
They're not selling the slices.
They're not selling it.
They're just offering it as a taste.
If for some reason they were to slice up fruits and berries, let's say, and have that available for purchase, then they would be required. And Mr. Knieva, can you tell us how many vendors currently hold, who sell at Farmers Markets, how many have this license that we're talking about this evening?
Currently, there are seven.
So there are seven individuals. So you think of all the various vendors you see at all the Farmers Markets citywide, and there are currently seven that are subject to this, and I believe there are 11 total citywide.
Yes, there are 11.
So there are an additional four vendors that are subject to this citywide for other events and circumstances. There's only seven vendors currently at the Farmers Market that are subject to these.
That's correct.
Alderman Rainey?
How about, that was the question I was going to ask. What about at the Ridgeville Farmers Market? Is it, can't be seven there.
I don't know how many vendors Ridgeville has. Typically, they have somewhere around 10. And so it would, again, depend, I don't know.
I know, I know, but do you know how many you give the full-blown inspection to? Who are?
We don't have the applications from Ridgeville this year, so I don't know how many have applied to do those types of activities.
And you can't remember from last, I mean, was it like all of them, half of them, a few of them?
It's.
Anybody, Michael from Ridgeville, can anybody here tell us how many would be subjected to that?
Last year, there were four or five.
And what were they selling? We want to know, what were they doing? Let's, let's get everybody understanding this on the same, at the same time. Who was the vendor? What were they selling?
Last year, we had a couple baked goods, baked good vendors. We had a bread seller and a cookie seller who's here tonight. And then we also had someone doing a pomegranate topinot.
Yeah, that's for sure going to be.
Which was great. And then coffee. It affects coffee as well. So that was.
Ground coffee or serving coffee?
Both, I believe. They were selling it by the glass and by the whole beans, so.
So where did they get the beans? They're not, those aren't grown locally?
No, those aren't grown locally, but it fell under the, it was one of the items on the application that they had to get the extra $225 permit for.
And the.
It will also affect eggs, I'm sorry. Eggs is another vendor, and we had a meat vendor, would also affect them.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That, that I would.
And Mr. Knieva, if the vendor is vending at other markets, they, it's one permit for all or one permit for each market they vend at?
It's one permit for the season.
So if tags is.
For the six-month season.
So if tags is at multiple Farmers Markets, they have one permit for all the Farmers Markets they do.
That's good. I like that.
As long as they're preparing the food the same way, and we know about that, yes.
Can you explain the difference, though, between the tags and somebody who just may be making bread and selling it there?
I'm not sure if we understand your question.
Well, tags is a bakery that has a site, right?
So you want to explain the difference between an established, like brick and mortar, and someone baking out of their home?
Right, absolutely.
That's the question.
And why would we require?
Right. Brick and mortar obviously has a food establishment license, and so they're.
Already covered.
What's that?
They're already covered correctly.
They're not, they're not covered. This is seen as an extra, and it's an extra fee because this is an extra part of their business.
So you're telling me that the bakeries in Evanston who come to the downtown market have to pay an extra fee?
At this time.
Oh, okay.
Alderman Burris?
Okay, I actually think there may be, that, I believe if a vendor is at Ridgeville and pays the $225 for their cookies, and they sell at Custer Street, you charge them again.
It was, for our fees, those are two different fees. So the seasonal fee is six months, and for anybody to operate a temporary food festival, which is Custer Street, Lake Shore Arts, Ethnic Arts, that's a temporary food event fee. So these are.
So even though they're operating the exact same way, so similar to if they were, so if they were operating at Ridgeville and at the downtown market, it would only be one fee. But if they're operating at Ridgeville and a two-day event, you're double charging them.
We're charging for the two separate activities.
Okay. But I'm, once again, you're, so you're double charging them, so they could be, they could be at, sorry, they could be at three different Farmers Markets, and you would charge them $225.
Correct.
But if they're at a Farmers Market and only a two-day event, you're going to charge them again for the exact same inspection.
The.
How is that possibly rational? A, okay, just, just bear with me here. And then, breaking down the fees again, you're charging $225 for a coffee vendor? How could you possibly spend an hour, six times throughout the season, inspecting the coffee vendor? I'm not sure what you could do for an hour inspecting the coffee vendor or the cookie lady, who has already made the cookies somewhere else at a facility that has been inspected and has a health inspection. Her cookies are all put together in bags or whatever she sells them in, so she's displaying, basically selling them. What could an inspector do, once again, for an hour, six times throughout the season? That is, that's just, I mean, crazy to me that we are trying to tell people that we honestly are doing that much work for the $225. That seems wrong.
Alderman Burris, could you let Mr. Knieva answer, please?
And perhaps I'll try to take it from Mr. Knieva, because I think it's a larger public policy question. The laws that Mr. Knieva and Ms. Thomas are referring to have been on the books for some time, and they represent the regulation of activity that occurred here in Evanston at the time they were created. So they probably date back to one Farmers Market and two summer festivals. And so what has happened in Evanston over time is that that has evolved. We now have at least five Farmers Markets operating on a weekly basis, multiple additional festivals. We have had the growth of vendors at these festivals. The City Council has just approved language that has broadened the definition of baked goods. So beginning this evening, that definition has been broadened to allow, based on this council's request, additional vendors to participate who have baked goods. So clearly, the laws have evolved. This is not because the staff is looking to make additional money. This is not because there is mismanagement. It is because the laws have evolved and the use has evolved. We are here this evening to present to you what the current laws are, and I will say, as your City Manager, I think there are opportunities to make adjustments. So the question, I believe, here before us this evening is what do we do now that we have entered the spring and summertime when we have the bulk of these uses? Can we make those adjustments here tonight, or do we need to come back to you with a comprehensive look that says, here are food vendors in Evanston that may vend at various events throughout the year, may they be special events, may they be multiple Farmers Markets? Are they local businesses? Do they have bricks and mortar here? Do they not? Are they based here? How do we want to measure that? And I do not believe, Alderman Burris, members of the City Council, that our current pro, co-provisions really provide the flexibility that the reality of these events do need. I will also say that it's very important for our Health Department to provide appropriate inspections. And I think we basically have two flavors of appropriate inspection now, and I believe the current uses really demand additional flavors. So what we would like to suggest this evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, is to address the fee issue first, because I think that's the most direct way to address this and make adjustments for the current summer with the fee schedule. Many have already paid these fees. We would propose, if there's an adjustment, that those fees be refunded. I believe most all the vendors, Mr. Gainers, at the downtown market have already paid those fees. We would, if there's an adjustment, we would encourage the adjustment to be made for all vendors citywide, regardless where they are located. We would make that adjustment and then come back to you as part of the budget process for fiscal 2012 with a new scheme addressing this flexibility. But again, I think it's very important to stress that we're dealing with provisions and regulations that were adopted at a different time and place. Only tonight has the City Council allowed the bakers, the many of who are here concerned, to lawfully operate at Farmers Markets. You've now amended the code to allow that to happen. So naturally, your fee basis needs to be as flexible as well. So, Madam Mayor, I would, you know, encourage certainly the council for additional discussion, but at an appropriate point, I'd like to make a suggestion as to how the fees could be adjusted in the current year so that we may able to move forward.
You are on the list, Alderman Wynn. Alderman Rainey?
Yeah. I, I absolutely think we should have inspections and have absolutely no issue with that. I do have an issue, like you say, with type A and type B and type C and type D or level A, B, C, and D. The meat guy, he needs to be inspected, or she needs to be inspected. I'm not sure how you inspect the person who brings a wrapped cookie. So those kinds of things, I mean, unless you're going into the kitchen and see how that cookie's prepared, I'm not sure, other than affidavits from the person doing it. But, but, we've, we've had bread for years at the Farmers Market. I remember years ago allowing bakeries to come in, so this isn't the first year we've had bread.
But Alderman Rainey? Alderman Rainey, members of the council, you have just broadened the definition of baked goods.
Well, okay.
This evening. That definition has been very narrow as far as bread only. The reality is that local bakeries have been selling things beyond bread, because their patrons and our residents have wanted them to.
Right.
And so we have done that. But however, as we've had smaller baked good vendors come to us, we've had to grapple with that problem in the code. And so you have just now passed a measure that broadens that, because the reality is people have been selling, those have been licensed to sell only bread, have been selling many things in addition to bread.
All right.
Now we've leveled that playing field.
All right. So we, but I mean, we've had baked goods, we've expanded, that only makes sense. So I'm, I mean, I'm happy with what you're willing to do, take a look at the whole system. I don't think anybody is saying, including Alderman Burris, not to inspect. I mean, we, we want our Farmers Markets to be providing safe foods. I do think that, I think the template that you've given us for inspection costs, regardless of what people are selling, seems very, very over the top, and I hope you can reach some kind of compromise on these. And, you know, I can't imagine why it wouldn't be, you know, foods that have to be cooked, foods that have to be refrigerated, you know, the way they're presented.
And Alderman Rainey, members of the council, I think as many things in the city of Evanston over the last couple of years, they have evolved. This council's asked us to look at making changes, and we've come back to you with changes. I think it's very appropriate, at this point, that we make similar provisions here. We also need to be mindful of the actual costs. And so I think there's a balance between all of that. And again, as we've made adjustments in other parts of the municipal government, I think perhaps we're at the point where we need to make adjustments here to protect the public safety regarding the health issues our concern, be reasonable in recovering our costs, because that has also been a key component here, and also make sure that we are not a detriment to these markets that clearly provide important economic development activity throughout the community.
Would you, would you restate one more time for the community and for us exactly how you're going to go about making, or at least reviewing, the current situation and making changes?
Certainly. My, my suggestion would be to cut by 50% the fees that are being charged for this current year, that we would provide refunds to those that have already paid the cost, and that any additional fee would be half of the, the current fee. So we're looking at the 200 and, I'm sorry, went to the wrong page here.
$225.
The $225. So, so let's, so let's call it $110 for rounding purposes. So we would have $110 instead of $225. We would have the health department continue making the, the same application review, interview of applicant licensing inspection, but would encourage them to be flexible in the actual expenditure of dollars, because there really is an actual expenditure of dollars here. We would take, I would propose that we take any lost revenue, in my understanding, from some work that was done by our finance department this afternoon, that the total dollar amount for these fees is about $5,000 for the course of the year. So we're looking at potentially a $2,500 deficit. We would look, as we progress through the, the year, and would ask the council to allow us to use economic development dollars for whatever that actual revenue shortfall is. It would be around $2,500 in order to make the budget whole. We would then come back to you with the fiscal 2012 budget, as we look at the health department's budget, and rework the fee structure, and also come back to you with what we believe the revenue implications would be. One piece of this that I don't know we've had a chance to talk about is what these inspectors do through a seven-day week. And it's a matter of managing that time by not hiring more inspectors. We could flex time if we had more inspectors. However, and maybe Mr. Keneva could talk just briefly about the other duties and assignments and the number of inspectors we're talking about. This is not a large number.
Sure.
Of, of staff members we're talking about.
City manager, I can address that. We have three full-time sanitarians, and throughout the work week, they are looking at about 380 food establishments doing annual inspections, and sometimes biannual, and responding to complaints, as well as it relates to those establishments. So they may be out three to four times to one establishment doing an inspection. We do about 30, about 28, I'm sorry, daycare, home daycare providers, where they're providing inspections as well. Also, we do lead assessment and risk assessments to those homes that have been reported to us by the state as having children that have experienced lead poisoning. We also do pest control and rodent management, air quality reports and complaints, and smoking complaints. So during a work week, our three inspectors spend 37.5 hours of their day responding to annual inspections that are required by legislature, or responding to those complaints as well. And so, again, the farmer's market inspections tend to fall on evening and weekend hours, as they do operate throughout the summer months, and that requires the additional day for the three full-time inspectors.
Thank you. Alderman Wen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I was going to say something a little bit more earlier, but now the city manager has, has altered that somewhat. I categorically disagree with you in just having this and deciding to just cut these fees in half. I mean, I would really want to see an analysis of this. I go to the farmer's market probably every other week, usually, sometimes every week, and I buy with confidence from every one of those vendors, knowing that they have, they have, the food has been inspected. I buy and eat from many of those sources of that food, and I want to continue to be able to do that. Not that we would not be able to do that. But I've lived in another country for three years where it would be unthinkable to eat something off the street or from a market without coming home and washing it in chlorine. Unthinkable. And you'd be hospitalized. So, I mean, I, we really depend on that. And Alderman Braithwaite has just done an analysis of this. This is $12 a week for these vendors.
$12.23.
$12.23 for these vendors. That's cheap.
And Alderman Wen?
And, let me finish. And you know, do you know how fast our economic development, delightful economic development bubble of our farmer's market would burst if we had an outbreak of salmonella at that farmer's market? Pretty fast. This is cheap. These inspectors work really hard. I will not support cutting this fee in half. I will not. You know? And, no, no, maybe inspecting cookies is not worth that much time, but inspecting someone who's got meat, or poultry, or cheese, and they're cooking it? Sure, that takes that amount of time. Maybe we need some minor alteration in this. But I, you know, I'll bet there's a way to get sick serving coffee. I'm sure there is. Okay? So I, and I really disagree with that. I really, really disagree with that. So grand total, we have 11 vendors in this city, and we're going to cut these things in half. I, I, that is, that is silly to me, just silly. And if we're having to dip into the Economic Development Fund because we can't make, because we're clearly creating a hole in the health department budget, then this is a mistake. We need to rethink this, perhaps with a, with a, a different price license, but, no, not for things that are going to make people wander through our market so happy without ever once thinking that they should not bite into something, or take a taste, or wa, or hand it to their two-year-old in their stroller. You know, try living in someplace where it is absolutely unthinkable to eat something off the street, no matter how delicious it looks. And then you'll realize how wonderful our farmer's market is.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
And then may I just make a quick clarification, that I'm not proposing any change in the inspections. None.
Right. But you're proposing something that's going to put, put a hole in our health, health department budget, so it actually is, is taking away something that actually we are doing that's valuable.
And I'm not asking, again, that there would be no change in the inspection, that the amount of inspection-
No, I recognize that, but, but what, no, I recognize nothing will change in the inspections, but we're undercutting ourselves. This is something we are getting real value for, and we're charging the appropriate amount for the value.
And we are one of the few communities in Illinois that charge the appropriate amount for the value.
Well, then, that is not a reason for us not to continue to be doing the right thing.
I believe Will Met charges $25 annually.
Well, Will Met can afford to do that.
So I'm just, again, I'm just trying to, from a balance, from an economic development perspective, that the, the amount of money, we're talking $2,500, if it allows us to move forward with this issue. But again, no change in the inspection, no change to the public's health.
No, I recognize that.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Wait, wait.
Oh, sorry. Tootin', go ahead.
You've got us all agitated.
Yeah, we're all worried down here. This clearly needs to pay for itself, and I'm assuming from the numbers that the department staff gave us, these are the numbers that make this program pay for itself. And if we are going to ensure that the people shopping at the farmer's market are, are going to be provided with healthy goods that have been inspected, it clearly has to pay for itself. Cookie lady, well, is this the cookie lady? Cookie lady, okay. I, I appreciate everyone that comes and has a business at the farmer's market, and I'm assuming that you and your fellow vendors are there to make money. And that, and I appreciate that you're making your cookies in a licensed facility, but obvious, obviously, every time you make a packaged product, there's inherent questions that come along with that. What's in your product? Are there, is there anything in your product? Is it going to be labeled appropriately so that people who have allergies will know what to buy and what not to buy? And I'm sure that's what you're doing. And I'm sure that's what anyone working at your stand would be doing also. We need the city to verify that. We just need to make sure that everything is labeled properly, so that anyone with allergies who might be affected would know prior to purchase. As a, as a point of, of, of information, we have stopped selling prepared dog biscuits, home-prepared dog biscuits in our store because of the problems with mold growth and other things, because they're not, because having been packaged, that facilitates mold growth. And we've just found that it's difficult, working with private vendors who make, make these dog biscuits to, and even vendors who prepare freeze-dried or dehydrated biscuits. When they make them at home, it's a problem. So, I know you're making yours in a licensed facility. I, I just feel that to protect the, the, the health of our, our citizens, we just really need to not only make, make sure everything's inspected, but also to make sure that it's paying for itself. And like Alderman Wen, I really question the, the wisdom of taking any money from the Economic Development Fund to pay for the cost of inspections. So I'd ask staff to take another look at the cost and see if we haven't overstated it, and if we haven't overstated it, then I would stick with what it was.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
Just a quick question to the health department. Have we had any incidents of food poisoning?
We have had outbreaks of foodborne illness, yes.
Particularly at the farmer's market?
Not at the farmer's market in Evanston.
Okay.
Not since I've been here, since 2005.
Okay. So when you break down the, that $293, Alderman, Melissa Wen mentioned it, so it's $48 a month, and basically $12.23 a week that we're passing along to, to each of the, of the vendors, which I don't think sounds like a lot of money. I guess I'd go back to the cookie lady. Is $12.23 a week for whatever revenue that you generate for your sales, is that an unreasonable amount to have to pay for a health inspection fee?
Considering that-
Could you go to the mic?
I was told that each of the cookies had to be wrapped and labeled with all of the ingredients. So I'm coming to the market with them in that condition. So basically, the inspection is looking at the cookies and making sure there's a label on everything that I have there. And it's, I'm doing the same thing week after week, so I don't understand why that would have to occur $12 a week for every week, when it's the same thing, nothing is changing.
Thank you. A couple of points. First of all, I do want to make sure that it's clear that we don't create the perception that we're attacking our health department or our inspectors. I, I feel like the tone is, it's taken on that tone, and these are people that are simply doing their jobs, they're following the state regulations, and they're basically doing what we told them to do. So to attack them or infer that they're somehow, they're not doing time sheets, it's not like they're attorneys filling out time records, the way I understand, that these are estimates or averages based on, on what they're doing. And I have no interest in attacking them for, for simply doing their job the way they're supposed to be doing it. I agree that the fee should cover the cost of the program. I feel strongly about that. We have three inspectors. My observation is that they are very overworked as it is. It's difficult to get the job done in the first place. If they're going out on a Sunday, we don't pay straight time for Sundays or Saturdays. These are, these are off-hours, and these are when the inspections have to occur. So I agree with Alderman Wen that this should cover the cost of the program, and I, I wouldn't support any reductions that would go, go below that for, for unique examples like someone who's already in the system on a weekly basis and being inspected if they come to one other event. Perhaps it would be appropriate to adjust that, that one-off event for them, because they are already in the system, and, but as far as across-the-board cuts, I, I wouldn't support that either.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
Yeah. Alderman, I've, I've lived in other countries too, but, and eaten at farmer's markets there. So, just to let you know, you're not the only one. And the tone is about being honest and transparent. This fee structure that was put before us, I would like to have a survey, an anonymous survey of the vendors. What happens at your inspection? Are you inspected six times, and is that inspector there an hour each time? I'm not talking about us suddenly paying, we're, we're asking for more money than we're really putting out. So what I am requesting is effort reporting. Exactly what you said, Alderman Wilson. We are not being honest about how much time our inspectors are putting out for each of these inspections. So I want to see. How much time are they really, and I want a, a survey from our vendors. Are our inspectors really there that often? As you just heard from one of our vendors, they show up, they pick up the cookie, they look at the packaging, and they're on their way. If it takes more than a minute and a half, I would be shocked. Coffee, for example, sure, things can go wrong. How could you possibly be there for an hour? I don't think we should take money out of the Economic Development Fund. I think we need to do a lot more with that. But we can't just make up numbers, and we have to find a way to do flex time. We have, we're paying people double time on a Sunday, we're paying people time and a half. If we know that it's coming up for the summer, we can do flex time. And it's not $12 a week for all farmer's markets. The downtown farmer's market runs, I believe, seven to nine weeks longer than Ridgeville, or probably Central Street will, or West End Market. These are all different. And if you're looking at the number of people that come to each of these markets, the people in the downtown market are making far more money than the people at these other markets. So basically, we're driving those other markets out of business. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have inspections. I'm saying that we should be reasonable about it and be honest. These fees are not honest.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Thomas, Mr. Keneva, you, you work in this every day, and you have a pretty good idea, I think, of how our regulations and state regulations make sense or don't make sense for regulation of our farmer's markets. Central Street's going to get a new farmer's market midweek, part of the day, I think, three to seven, beginning June 1st, and I know some of those vendors have concerns about the health inspection fees. I'm not sure they all understand that most of them will be exempt from those fees. So we'll make sure and get that information to them. But to, City Manager Bob Kowitz, you, you mentioned perhaps putting together a plan for analyzing our actual costs for inspections and incorporating that into, the reality of those costs into a fee schedule for inspections that don't undermine our interest in promoting farmer's markets, but ensure the safety of the food sold at those markets and recover our costs.
Yes.
Can we do that? And then?
Alderman Grover, members of the council.
What's the plan, and when would we come back to discuss this? I don't know if we're going to resolve it tonight.
I, I, I think it was my recommendation that we would do this as part of the budget process. If the council would like us to drop other assignments and, and focus on this, we can. My suggestion was for a compromise for the current year, because the reality of the time that would be involved in order to do that, I think, as Alderman Burris has said, I would like to see a little bit more of some actual time cards as we move forward this summer. In the meantime, we're not collecting revenue, because I've asked the staff not to collect revenue from those markets that have not yet started, while those that have already started have already paid for the year. So I was looking for a middle-ground solution here that would give us the flexibility to come back and do this right, reflecting the changes, but also be mindful of our fiscal realities. So I'm, I'm a little hard-pressed to come up with a third alternative here. We could certainly, you know, subject all of the, the markets to the, the inspections and then bill them after the fact. I mean, that is not a standard thing we do with other city services, so I'm reluctant to, to make that recommendation. But I think what's most important is moving forward and doing this correctly, as others in the council have said, to make sure we accurately look at what has changed in the, the climate of how these vendors operate in Evanston, and come back with a, a real today estimate as to what that costs. Unfortunately, I think that's going to take a little time, and these markets are here and now.
And City Manager, if I may add, what we found historically is that many, what you do in brick and mortar is different, what we're learning, how our vendors operate in the market. It's not the exact same operation, and it's not food preparation. I wish I could say that a food establishment that's licensed by the health department operates the same when they're in an event. Historically, it hasn't happened that way. Also, historically, we gave you an average of the time that we spend on vendors. It's not a hard and fast, we're there an hour. Sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less, but we just gave you an average of the time. We also gave you an average of the number of inspections. Some vendors, it takes more to get them compliant, because we want to be helpful. And we try to reach out to vendors that we know about ahead of time to give that, that kind of monitoring, so we won't have to cease and desist in operations, because we know that it can challenge the economy or the revenue for, for that vendor. So I just wanted you to be mindful that there are foods that fall in different risk categories. And so, no, our inspectors aren't looking at just a physical cookie, they're, they're assessing the ingredients, because some of the ingredients fall into a different level of risk. And that's what we operate from, from the state guidelines, there's risk, there's meat, low, medium, and high. So I just wanted to add that additional information. Again, what we presented to you was the average time, the average number of inspections, and just be mindful that different ingredients create different levels of hazards to the public. So our goal is really to, as your goal is to provide food safety, and not to make money or challenge vendors as they try to operate.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey? Alderman Rainey?
Alderman Holmes?
Two things. One, I'm sorry, two things. One, if you're making cookies and you're doing it at a facility, licensed facility, do we inspect that facility?
Annually, yes.
Annually?
Correct.
Okay. And so that if somebody says that they are using a, now we're a cooking establishment, say--
Yes.
--to do their baked goods--
Mm-hmm.
And they bake the cookies and they put their ingredients and everything, how do we, I mean, I know we go inspect it maybe even the first time, see them there--
Correct.
--making that.
Correct.
The possibility, and, you know, we're being honest and transparent, I mean, somebody could also decide just to bake them at home and put the same ingredients and stuff on--
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. And so, my second question then is that, and only because I did a lot the first couple of years with Western Market, I know the inspectors, when they come out, they're looking not only, it depends on what foods you're looking at.
Correct.
If you're, say, if they have to come out and check the temperatures of something that's being cooked, how long? I mean, so they may come, if your market is open, say, from ten to two, they may come twice or three times during that time just to check temperatures and stuff. And I've been through that kind of inspection. So I think you have to sort of walk through it so it's not just, you know, the hour may add up in terms of three visits or two visits--
Correct.
--or what have you. So that, I think that when we get a report back, that we need to look at all those aspects of what might happen.
Sure. I agree.
Right. And my last thing is that I still, can you just walk me through one more time--
Sure.
--the bakeries? Because I know we had just, we made changes in terms of how that happened. We used to have one set of rules for the bakeries because there was only certain bakeries, and we expanded that. Is that not correct? I'm looking at Mr. Gainer only because we talked about it when it was going on. But, so you're checking the bakeries all the time, say it's tags or it's business and so what have you. And they are being inspected, and they bring not other things, but they bring their baked goods there sealed and everything sell. And they still pay then the fee for the inspection there as well as a fee for their establishment at Davis and Maple.
If they participate, if they participate in a temporary food event, there's a fee that does--
I understand about temporary, but this will be the markets. I'm just, because I didn't understand that. I'm having a hard time processing it in my head because that's not the way I thought it was.
Are you asking about the seasonal permit fee for the farmer's market? That is an additional fee, yes.
Oh, okay. For the, not the farmer's market fee. I'm talking about the--
The inspection.
--health inspection fee.
Well, it's a package. If they're participating in the farmer's market and there are already a food establishment or bakery, right? Is that what you're asking me?
Yeah.
And then, when they fill out another permit to participate in the seasonal food event which lasts six months, they do incur an additional fee.
Right.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't realize that. I thought that that was just--
Yes.
How much is the fee?
Two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five.
Okay.
Alderman Wilson?
And again, that's for the farmer's market.
Downtown.
That's twenty-seven Saturdays or something.
Yeah, that's--
It is additional--
Downtown market.
Two twenty-five. Yeah, I understand that. Yes, additional two twenty-five.
And just to be clear, if there are equitable adjustments to be made in the fee structure, I think that makes sense. It's perfectly fair. But I do want to make sure that whatever it nets out at, it covers the cost. And the last point is, I just want to reiterate, I haven't seen anything that's dishonest or not honest about the fees or the way the staff handles the inspections or the process. So I just want to make sure that we do not have the inference that there's any, anything dishonest whatsoever about the, at least that's my view about the process. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Burrus?
Yeah, I've just been handed here a note from Ridgeville. They're waiting for us to make a decision on this for, six of their vendors may not come back. Their market starts June 1st. And once again, I know most of you don't participate in the Ridgeville market and you're not in South Evanston, but it is a big deal for South Evanston. And responding to Alderman Wilson, the honesty factor is about the time. When you put down on a time sheet, or you put down on a fee, you need to be honest about really that time. I'm not saying that individual inspectors are dishonest. What I'm saying is the fee structure is not transparent and honest in how we did this breakdown, was my point.
Alderman Tendem?
A question to the Ridgeville folks. Is there, this seems to be that there's also Ridgeville Park charged for participating in the market, which makes this total package the most expensive in the city. Is that correct?
No. The fee that the vendors pay to Ridgeville is three hundred and twenty-five. It's much less than the eight hundred that the--
Okay. So it is a shorter season, smaller fee?
Yeah.
Three twenty-five? Three twenty-five for the season?
Yeah.
Whoa.
What is the city?
Eight hundred.
Oh, the city is eight hundred. I mean, I understand that. I hate to tell you what West End is, but that's okay.
What is West End?
They just charge you at the table. It's okay. I didn't realize that. But each market has their own fee schedule. So maybe that's, yeah.
I would suggest that gives you another idea of where to look to get your fees reduced.
Mm-hmm.
Alderman Fisk?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Could we have from city staff a breakdown of the cost for every farmer's market? I would really like to have that. I don't think I've seen that.
I'm sorry, breakdown of--
So at the, no, at the downtown farmer's market, folks are paying eight hundred dollars for, to participate and have a booth in the downtown farmer's market.
Which is separate and apart from the health inspector. Is that--
Right, right, yeah. Eight fifty.
Eight fifty for the market that we operate at the--
Twenty-seven dates downtown.
Twenty-seven dates downtown. And that is--
Okay.
--the only market we operate completely with city forces is the downtown market. We provide assistance with the west side market, which is ECDC. We were providing informal assistance this year with that. We're providing informal assistance with the Central Street. We don't provide really any assistance with the Ridgeville from the operation of their market. And then the YMCA, which we've not talked about--
Correct.
They also have a small market.
Yeah, it's really tiny.
So each of one of those markets charge a separate fee to cover their costs for the facilities. Ridgeville has their own facility. ECDC operates there. So, you know, those costs vary, the length of time varies. So it's difficult. We could put together--
I'd like to see--
--a table with the cooperation of the other operators. I think Mr. Webb was here earlier. He's pretty well plugged in with them, as is Mr. Gainer, so we could come back. Madam Mayor, so I'm a little bit in a quandary as to what to do.
You've been given completely conflicting direction.
I've been given--
And see why you have problems.
What I think I hear the council saying is that you would like to make sure that the fees that are charged represent the efforts that are required to protect the public safety, that you'd like us to look at the fee structure. We have what, Mr., for our twenty-eight, twenty-nine different kind of liquor licenses, perhaps we can have three or four different types of farmer's market permits, depending, I think I'm hearing that poultry and meat probably fall into one category, baked goods fall into a different category, empanadas, whatever the other thing was that, the more prepared foods probably is a third category, and we're happy to do that. If the council feels that there is urgency here, we can do our best in three weeks' time to come back with an entirely new structure. It will not be based, I think, on good data because quite honestly, we have not been collecting that, the kind of precise data that I think you're all craving for this evening at all of the farmer's markets. Because again, the downtown is different than, Ridgeville is different than the west side, which we can absolutely do, but we cannot do that in three weeks. So if you'll give us more time, then the quandary is, what do we do now? Because Ridgeville is starting now, I would imagine.
June 1st.
June 1st. I believe the Central Street market's June 1st date. Bucu has already started--
West End is June 4th.
Okay. So that's three that will start prior to your next meeting. That leaves the Y, and I don't know what their schedule is. And did I miss any? And when the downtown one started several weeks ago. We could, the council could leave the direction as is that--
Alderman Fisk has a question.
I'm sorry.
I'm just, I'm just going to suggest that we prorate the charges until you're able to come back and do it, use Alderman Braithwaite's numbers, twelve dollars and what, twenty-three cents?
It was ninety-four.
Ninety-three cents. And prorate that rather than trying to reduce the rate, reimburse people, then come back and possibly find that in fact the numbers are correct.
So you're saying that we would institute, rather than an annual charge, a weekly charge until such time?
Until you have the information ready for council.
Another layer.
Refunding money is a layer, too.
Absolutely. Refunding money.
Alderman Wynn?
How many days, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name. How many dates are the, is the Ridgeville market open?
Twenty markets.
So it's not that many, fewer than--
Twenty-seven for downtown.
Okay. And you said six vendors would not return. Would that be six that meet, that fall under this inspection?
Yes. Those are the six vendors who would have to pay the two hundred and twenty-five dollar fee.
Did they pay it last year?
Well, some of them are new vendors who, I mean, I get phone calls all the time from potential vendors who, once I tell them that we, that Evanston has this fee, they're shocked. And because, as the city manager mentioned, this is not something common for the surrounding areas. So, you know, some of them are new vendors who are wanting to come but sort of balking at the price. And then some of them who are vendors from last year who struggled to make ends meet and want to come back but are, you know, hesitant.
Can you describe the types of vendors that are thinking about coming?
Yes. Well, three of them are baked goods.
Mm-hmm.
And we have the coffee, we have the eggs, and who am I missing? Oh, cook, I'm sorry. Four of them are baked goods and eggs, and then coffee.
Alderman Rainey?
Sorry. I'll put you on the list, but it's a long list.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I'm thinking that why can't, why can't we do our study, those who've paid have paid, do our study for the markets that haven't started yet? After we do our study about what a fair fee is, charge them at the end of the season and let them know if, you know, they, I know it's a risk that they won't pay, but if they don't pay, then they won't be subject to inspection next year and not allowed to participate. I mean, I just think all this bookkeeping is just such a nightmare. I think if you haven't yet been assessed a fee, let it go until we come up with the fee and then assess it. And make no promises, but the effort should be to structure fees so that they are affordable and that they do cover the cost.
Alderman Rainey, may I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Guy with the meat shouldn't pay the same as the person with a wrapped-up cookie.
I agree, Alderman Rainey. But, and, may I ask you a question? So you would, you, under your idea, then, would the folks who haven't paid yet, would they be then billed at the end of the season?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And it would be made very clear that--
Under a new scheme--
Under the new cooking--
--so that the ski lady doesn't get billed for the same amount that the--
Yes. And then, under the new scheme, those who paid more, you know, we could just let them have a deduction for the following year. So, I mean, this business of returning money--
I could support that.
--and it just makes no sense to me.
I do think--
But you know what? We have this brilliant guy in the audience, Marty Lyons, and all of his crew, they can figure out this finance thing. Ms. Thomas can figure out the inspection thing. The city manager oversees them. They can figure it out. I think the message is clear. We should pay for our services, not eliminate inspections, and just try to make it affordable.
And make it simple, not a bureaucratic nightmare. Alderman Wynn, did you get your last question asked? All right. Alderman Fisk? Alderman Holmes?
I'll pass.
All right. Seeing no further lights, I would like the name of the cookie lady so you are not referred to as the cookie lady in the minutes.
It's Andrea Katz. Thank you very much.
It's my competition. I want to know who she is.
And I would like to thank the health department. I too think you do a wonderful job, and you are certainly doing the job we've asked you to do. So thank you very much for all your good work.
And it's still not resolved, is it?
No, it's still not resolved, City Manager.
Well, let me try again.
When you left, you figured it out without you?
I was just trying to, tried to hear. Okay. I believe, what I'm hearing from the council is that you like farmer's markets and you would like them to continue in the city of Evanston. That you have one farmer's market, you have all three farmer's markets getting ready to start now. In talking with our health department staff, it is critical that we get these applications in regardless because regardless who pays or how much they pay, there is work that these, that our, that our health department staff members need to do. So what I would suggest is that we move forward, that the Ridgeville folks have their vendors contact the health department, that that process begin now. The ten-day normal period is already, we're already into that a little bit. So that will require additional work, an additional overtime of our staff to get that all together, but we'll go ahead and handle that so that we can have the Ridgeville, the west side, the Y, and the Central Street farmer's markets ready to go. And we will telegraph that information to them. We will move forward without a new fee schedule. We will ask the council to give us until your second regular meeting, well, until the meeting of June 20th, to come back to you with a new scheme for multiple type permits that we will come back to you with as best data as we can gather from our experience at the downtown market as well as these other satellite markets. Those permits will be flavored, as discussed this evening, so those with the greatest potential for hazard, which I think we can identify, will be under one set of fees, those with less hazard and others. So my guess is it's a minimum three or four different kinds of permit schemes. We will then come to you with that on June 20th. We would ask then for those who have not paid fees, if the council is in agreement with the new structure, that those would be retroactive based on the new fee structure. We would ask the people at that time to pay those fees as agreed to, and if there's any adjustments that would be required for those that have already paid fees, that we would do that once the council has decided on a new fee scheme. So how does that sound?
Sounds good to me.
Everybody loves it, moving right along.
But we would ask that the operators of the markets get with the health department so that those applications can be put in. And Mr. Gainer has a question.
Well, I have a moment of a comment. When the, some of the farmers, the organic farmers came to us and suggested that we do a Central Street market, we talked about waiving all their fees in order, as a pilot program, to get them up and running.
And those are different kinds of fees.
Well--
So thank you for muddying the waters, Mr. Gainer.
Well, I'd rather do it now before all of this--
But it was already settled prior to that, and as we had discussed with the ward aldermen, the fees associated with our staff time and starting up on facilities that we owned, we were going to come for an alternate path for, but that was not including the health fees.
I think we have a plan.
Well, I just--
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gainer.
Thank you for muddying the waters.
All right. Moving right along, call of the wards, Alderman Burrus.
Thank you. Thanks again to the Ridgeville for being so outspoken and bringing this to our attention as a huge problem. Thanks again. Also, Ridgeville Park District has an opening for a commissioner that you can apply for, so go to their website. They're accepting applications until June 3rd. Is that true? Yes. Great. And finally, and most importantly, I want to thank the Evanston Police and NORHTAF, as well as community members who helped with the homicide investigation of the cab driver
that was shot in the ninth ward on May 15th. The identification of the suspect and arrest are a direct result of the outstanding collaboration between Evanston Police and NORHTAF. This illustrates the excellence in our law enforcement personnel, from police officers to detectives to forensic specialists. As always, they have my gratitude and steadfast support for the work they do every day to protect our community from these senseless acts of violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to remind everyone that the quarterly first ward meeting is coming up on June 7th, that's Tuesday, at the Evanston Public Library, the large community meeting room, between 7:00 and 9:00 p.m. We hope to see you all there.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
I'd just like to quickly thank the mayor and also the city staff, Steve Griffin, Economic Development, Nat Logan, Economic Development, Suzette Robinson, Doug Gainer, Marty Lyons, also the Police and Fire Department, and all the many residents of the second ward as well as the Businesses Association that came out to support making it happen this weekend. It was a wonderful event. Friday, we had approximately about three hundred folks and we had about two hundred folks on Saturday as well, despite the weather. So again, a round of thank you, as well as to our sponsors, the planning committee. As well, this Thursday, the second ward, I plan on hosting a meet and greet from 6:30 to 8:30. You are all invited to attend. It's going to be at a second ward restaurant, Panino's, located in the Dempster Street Plaza. And hopefully you can all make it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Winn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to let you all know that several of us, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Rainey, and I think that was the three of us, were, went to Few Spirits recently. It just opened up and we had a really interesting learning experience and what it's like to distill spirits.
Did you have a few spirits?
We
Nice and moonshot.
I can say I dipped my finger, but it wasn't, it wasn't, I think Alderman Rainey, yes, several times, that's right, right. I think some of the stuff we tasted would make, it was early in the process, I'd say it would make an excellent hand cleaner. Right, 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 Alderman Rainey? But it was still early in the process, but it is a beautiful space. And I think by now, he probably has some very fine spirits. So when it's up and running, we urge you all to go. And I'm sure that he has customers in Alderman Rainey and Alderman Braithwaite and me for a very long time to come. It's great. Paul Letgo is, you know, one of our, one of our own, and I urge you all to support him. And he was really patient through our long, long process. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I wanted to thank Bayla Nestorin for all of her hard work with Gray Park as well as our city staff and everyone else who helped out there. She's been engaged in a process of finding grant money and doing cleanup, so she's done a wonderful job so far and is continuing with those efforts. So I just wanted to recognize her for all of that hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to give a, for all of my fellow Alderpeople and for the citizenry out there, on your calendar for June 4th, to put down the mayor's summit for a safe summer, which will be at the Levy Center. And this is important because we really do need to work together as a community to figure out what we're going to do for and with our youth this summer, but also to have some long-range plans as well. So we'll be at the Levy Center at 10 o'clock on June 4th.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes? Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did save this for call of the wards as to not muddy the waters. I think, you know, as a community, we embrace these farmer's markets, and I'd like to, I know there is a waiting list for the main market. I know that it's the same group that likes to come back every year. It does limit the expansion of the market. So I would like to refer to staff that we look at some ways of expanding, because I think that it's something we need to encourage. And I think that if people are waiting to get into the main market, it could be very discouraging. So, hooray for the markets.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two events to announce. Tomorrow night, the ETHS chapter of the NAACP is hosting a Stop the Violence, Stop the Funerals, Start the Peace, Start the Love campaign community meeting, beginning at 6:00 o'clock in room A241 at Evanston Township High School. It's open to the public. Please go if you can. Room A241 is in the southwest corner of the school on the second floor. And on June 7th, the Central Street Neighbors Association and I are meeting with the developer of 1700 Central Street, the building where the Evanston Theater used to be. We're hoping, looking to move ahead, maybe even in 2011, on the project that's being proposed there. And it's looking as if it's going to be a rental building, not a condominium building with some really good features. And we've been consulting with the Central Street Neighbors Association on what they envisioned for that space. The developer's been very responsive. So on June 7th, we will be meeting to look at some of the plans, proformas, and some of the numbers associated with that proposed project. It will be at the Evanston Ecology Center, beginning at 7:00.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, first of all, I'd like to invite the new chamber director, Eve Doi, to our Economic Development Committee meeting on Wednesday night at 6:33 Howard Street at the police outpost. One of the main items on our agenda, and this will be a full committee meeting and the public is invited, main item on our agenda, one of them, will be the plans going forward for Howard Street. Tomorrow, very exciting, we're meeting with two different theaters for the building that we bought at 727 Howard. And in the afternoon, we are meeting with five volunteer local architects who are willing to commit time and effort to the redevelopment of the property, including a very famous firm known as Schuler and Shook, their theater and lighting design firm from downtown, to help us move forward with establishing Polarity Ensemble Theater at the site. Finally, and very sadly, I'd like to wish the family of the young man who was killed in Rogers Park, who was an eighth ward resident, Omar Esteban, our deepest sympathies on the part of all eighth ward people and I'm sure the members of the council. So if the family needs anything, they can let us know and we'll be glad to help in any way we can. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. I know this will come as a shock, but Alderman Wilson, we do not need a motion. We just need a motion to adjourn.
I can do that. Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. City clerk?
Alderman Burris. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Winn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.